Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. My colleagues on council, city staff. Welcome to the council meeting for today, Tuesday, September 26. I would ask everyone, please stand for a moment of silence following the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Once again, thank you all for that. And before we get to the roll call, I would just like to acknowledge the presence of our deputy city manager, Mr. James Wright on the dais, who's sitting in for our interim city manager, Ms. Mimi Terry. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
You can indicate your presence electronically, sir. Seven members of City Council are present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
We now have the minutes of a closed session, September 11, 2023, called meeting on September 12, 2023, a regular meeting on September 12, 2023, and a special called meeting on September 19, 2023. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Would you please vote electronically?
The minutes are adopted at seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Would you please read the council rules to the public?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body, rather than any particular member of the City Council's staff or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now come to the item of public hearing, item 23-299, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item?
Yes, sir. Public hearing with respect to the adoption of a proposed resolution adopting an amendment to the Articles of Incorporation of the City of Portsmouth Community Broadband Network Authority. The proposed resolution would amend Article 5 to provide for the Board of Directors to consist of non-council members.
Thank you, ma'am. Once again, this is a public hearing item. If you wish to come and speak on this public hearing item, you can come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Are there any speakers on this public hearing item? We do not have any registered speakers. Therefore, seeing none, this public hearing is closed. We will not vote on this public hearing item in this, in public hearings. We will vote on this item later on in the agenda. Public hearing is closed. Our next item is City Manager's Report, item 23-300, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend and reordain Article 1 of Chapter 32, Streets, Sidewalks, and Local Improvements of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by adding the new section 32-31 regarding visibility clearance at intersections.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item, 23-301. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to substantially amend and reordain Chapter 39 Wetlands of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia to comply with Sections 28.2-1302 of the Code of Virginia, which requires that certain amendments be adopted no later than January 1, 2024, and to make certain additional administrative modifications to the text of the chapter.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move for adoption.
Please vote electronically. Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have any discussion on that item? Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you. Our next item, item 23-302, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $25,990 from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration through the Virginia Highway Safety Office and appropriating said funds in the FY 2024 Grants Fund for use by the Police Department for traffic safety initiatives.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Item 23-303, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $10,000 from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration through the Virginia Highway Safety Office and appropriating said amount in the FY 2024 Grants Fund for use by the Police Department to reduce driving under the influence.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Move for adoption.
Second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Our next item, item 23-304. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting funding from the Virginia Department of Social Services in the amount of $1,800 and appropriating said amount in the FY 2024 Social Services Fund for the Family Partnership Meeting Incentive Program.
We are in need of a motion and a second.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Item 23-305, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting projects for assistance in transition from homeless funding in the amount of $3,713 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2024 Behavioral Health Care Services Fund for training, travel, and outreach services.
Thank you, ma'am. We are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
We have now come to item 23-306. This is a two-part item, in A and B, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the Resolution A that we are considering?
Yes, sir. Excuse me. A resolution to amend the Articles of Incorporation of the Portsmouth Community Broadband Network Authority.
Thank you, ma'am. And we do have a registered speaker for this item, Mr. Mark Godoldig Yutrowski. Sir, if you will come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and other neighbors. I am going to try to incorporate all my remarks into this item because there is a logical flow. You adopt this resolution first, and then you are adopting an ordinance, and the two are tightly linked. So my only concern, well, first, let me say that this is long overdue for you to appoint an independent Board of Directors. I have spoken at your meetings in the past and encouraged you to do so, so I'm glad to see that you are moving in that direction with all deliberate haste. The one concern I have is about the removal of appointees. I believe that your language should say "for cause." I have been in the unfortunate position of observing predecessor councils remove members from a board with no explanation to speak of, and what it looked like was a purge of people who were not appointed by that council. That's inappropriate. You're dealing with volunteer help. You're dealing with citizens who come forward and give their time without monetary compensation, and there should be some rules about what it takes to remain in good standing, that everybody knows going in, and that council abides by across changes in administration. So that's what I would like to see in the resolution and carried forward into ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. So is that to understand that you're speaking on both of the items?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Council members, this is for item A. Do we have a motion and a second?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item?
Mayor.
Oh, Councilman Tillage, I'm sorry, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So my question is in regard to the composition of the board. It makes mention that no member of City Council may be a part of the commission. In conversations that we've had as part of the commission, I know it was made mention that there were some members that did not wish to stay on, stay on the commission. However, it was also mentioned that if members did wish to stay on, that they could. This language would prohibit that, and I think that it would be beneficial to have a few members of council to serve on this board, speaking with some IT experts in other cities and in this city. It was made recommended that we keep a couple of council members to be a part, so I would just ask that we eliminate that sentence stating that no members of council could be, could serve, and if a member does wish to resign, then that would be their decision.
Madam Attorney, would you like the floor to respond to that?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Councilman Tillage, the current makeup of the broadband authority, those council members may remain until the elective process sort of through tuition, altruition, through tuition phases them out, okay? But if you are asking long-term for that to be a possibility, for them to remain, what we've seen in the past is they would be liaisons to this authority. What we want to be able to do, as the authority explained in this vote to make this happen, was to bring in experts from around the region to facilitate the further process of this authority, but it doesn't preclude the liaisons from being a part of that, as we've seen at other commissions. So I'd ask that that be the process.
So just for clarification, since all seven are current members, if I chose to stay on, I could remain on as long as I'm on City Council?
That's right. It would prohibit new, I'm sorry, hold on one second, I'm getting a buzz over here from Ms. White. So as it is written, no new council members can be appointed. The council members that are presently on it can resign, and then there's an option for removal, which has been described.
Correct. So I can still choose to stay on?
That's correct. Unless you're removed.
So I could stay on at my will, but there's still a possibility I could be removed?
If the, if the majority of the members so vote to do so?
Of majority of the commission or majority of council?
It is the majority. I'm looking over at my colleague over there.
Counsel.
Counsel. Counsel. Okay. Just like any other board with the removal language.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. As I recall our discussion, there were going to be two liaison, council liaisons to the, to the board. To my colleague's suggestion that a council member would stay on as long as they like, as long as they have a council seat, what if all the council members or three of them decided to stay on? I think that's a very awkward stance. You know, if we want this to, I think our reasoning was to bring people with technical expertise to this particular board and have councils as liaisons like we do other boards and commissions. I think we're going to get into an awkward situation by having it open-ended. Do you have any thoughts on that, Madam City Attorney?
Those are the exact sentiments that were discussed by the authority at the time of the discussion on this, and I don't, I don't have any other, I think what you've described is accurate. There are obviously prohibitions, you know, there are limitations when there's more than two on the, on the commission. Furthermore, if the meetings occur at the same time, that council members need to be in council chambers, that poses another problem that Ms. White was also concerned about, and I agree with that.
Yeah, I think it's totally problematic from that standpoint, and it's going to be very awkward if more than two council members decide they want to stay on the, on the board. I think the liaison positions are sufficient to keep council grounded on what's occurring.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Just for clarification purposes, the, the board is for to make decisions in Portsmouth, correct?
That's correct, sir.
So I kind of, I have a, I have an issue with the residential requirement. It reads, "Members of the Board of Directors of the Portsmouth Community Broadband Network Authority are not required to be a resident of the city, an owner of property located in the city, and owner of business located in the city, or employee of the city." I kind of have an issue with that standpoint of somebody outside of our city making decisions for the city of Portsmouth. I'm definitely not in agreeance with that. I think we should scrap that and make this about the city of Portsmouth.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, I'm planning on remaining on the board. The language that you all are using, referring to putting experts on, I've been in elected office almost 20 years now, and I know that a lot of times we try to couch the real issue. This board meets once a month, is that correct? So it meets once a month, and I know that what you're saying is not really the reason why you don't want council members up there. You want persons up there because they are entities within the city and the region who want access to information, and that's what, that's really about, putting persons who have an interest in having access to information contracts. I'm going to remain on the broadband board. I don't think that is a special expertise that is needed in our discussions. I think there are some of us that have a good grasp of what is being discussed, just like we do as council members, a multiplicity of issues come before us for which we're not expertise, experts, and we vote on those matters. So I'm not in agreement with this language change, and the average citizen doesn't even really know the dynamics of why this is being requested, and it's much deeper than a board that meets once a week, one, once a month, one and a half, some type of experts up there.
Thank you, sir. The city attorney has asked for the floor to clarify a point, so Madam, you have the floor.
Okay, I just want to note for the record, I understand that you all are making comment on both the Articles of Incorporation and the City Code changes. We're at the Articles of Incorporation point, which only, the only language change allows for the removal by council, so this next vote will only be with respect to that. And then B talks about the code change, which is, was addressed by Councilman Barnes and Councilman Whitaker, as to the makeup and Councilman Tillage, as to the makeup, and so that will be that second vote. So I just want you all to be clear on what you're voting on and when.
Right. I'm, I'm clear on it. It's just like the previous speaker, it's the flow of it, and both of them relate to each other, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for the clarification. So we have a motion, and I think we had a second. We did have a discussion, so I would ask everyone to please vote electronically.
This item is adopted four, three.
Next, we have item B, which is, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering at this time?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter 2 Administration of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by adding a new Articles to nineteen?
Mm-hmm.
Been out away from it a while, regarding the Portsmouth Community Broadband Network Authority.
Thank you, ma'am. And we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
I just want to reiterate that what we're proposing is to allow people from all over the region to make decisions about the city of Portsmouth and what we need and what we should do for our city. That includes some of the things that we were talking about, the topics of providing free Wi-Fi to some of our residents in the city who may need it, who don't necessarily have the access to it. We're asking someone who doesn't know the demographics of the city, who doesn't know about the city of Portsmouth, to be the one to make those type of decisions in the city of Portsmouth.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to reiterate my stance. I personally would like for a substitute motion to be entertained. If the person that made the motion would remove, because I think that no member of City Council may be appointed to serve on the authority, whether we can stay or not, that language is still there, meaning that council could come back next week and say, "Well, you're a member of council, sir, you're going to be removed." And based on behaviors in the past, I'm sure that could happen. But then also, to reiterate Councilman Barnes' point, the residency requirements, it was made mention by a council member that this board would serve the same as any other board and commission, but every other board and commission, according to state, I mean, excuse me, according to Portsmouth's code and charter, states that in order to be a board and commission member, you must be a resident, a property owner, or a business owner in the city of Portsmouth. So this language actually is different from that of other boards and commissions in the city. So this, so this board is not being treated as if it's a board and commission.
Thank you, sir. And, and, and if I could, Madam, Madam Attorney, one of, one of the, the items of the discussion that Councilman Tillage had indicated was a substitute motion for the, for the item A, which was already adopted.
For A? No.
Or was, was the substitute motion for?
For B, for this item.
For B, okay. Substitute motion for item B?
So what?
So the question, so the question is, we haven't dealt with the motion, item B yet.
Right.
So before we enter into a substitute motion, we first have to deal with the motion on the floor. Is that, is that or not? Okay.
Council members, based on the recommendation from Councilman Tillage, Council, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke made the motion, it was seconded by Councilman Hugel.
Right.
If they are willing to adjust their motion, we can correct that motion with that without having to go through the process, because you haven't voted on anything.
Very good. Thank you for clarifying that.
Then.
And you have the floor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, you have the floor, ma'am.
Okay, so I would like to amend my motion to include that members to serve on the broadband authority must own property, so have a business, or be a citizen of the city of Portsmouth.
Second.
Councilman Hugel can second, since he did the initial second.
So I don't agree with the motion. And I'll tell you why. When we had this discussion at the authority, we concluded, despite my colleague's comment, that we, there's some ulterior motive here. My motive is to ensure that we have people on the broadband authority that understand the difference between Wi-Fi, broadband, and other IT issues that are coming for that group, and we've spent some time sorting those technical terms out. I think we need technical know-how on the, on the authority, and I think we also need to remember that at the end of the day, the authority works for city councils, so anything that the authority tries to do ultimately has to be approved by us, and so if we don't like what they're doing, then, then we can overturn what they, what they propose. But extending the, the reach of this commission beyond the city gives us the opportunity to get IT know-how from across the region on the board so that they can give us the best recommendations on, on how to, to leverage the investment that we've made in our IT infrastructure, and so, so I'm opposed to changing the language.
Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
The board is made up of a single-digit group of people, and we have over 90-some-thousand people in the city of Portsmouth. I'm pretty sure we can find some that know the difference between Wi-Fi, broadband, and all that good stuff in the city of Portsmouth. And I'm not saying you, but I'm, I have to say this comment. The wording was very deliberate on what it was trying to do. It wasn't just specifically saying those things, because as Councilman Tillage indicated, none of our other boards have that language. So this was exclusively written for this particular board to get certain people on this particular board. Like I said at the beginning, we have over 90-some-thousand people in the city of Portsmouth. To say we can't find nine people of the, the best and brightest, seven, nine, however many, even more, you can add to it, is, is really kind of an insult to the city of Portsmouth and its residents.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
And B, also, we're not addressing the participation from council members. And B, also, we're not addressing the participation from council members on this board, is that correct? They can, they can serve?
That's correct. That was addressed in the first, in the Articles of Incorporation. But the Articles of Incorporation apply to, to the authority, so that it would still be in effect. This is really just about codifying that for our code. And so it's, it's the same.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I hear the discussion between my colleagues on, on whether we add people inside the city, outside of the city. But the, the correct, the bottom line is that the council will be the decision-makers, because on this board, they cannot vote on anything. The council is the council that votes, the authority brings the recommendations. So I think we're getting mixed up, which is why we needed to separate ourselves as a council and an authority in the first place, because the authority brings their recommendation to the council, and the council will ultimately make the decision on whether the, whatever it is goes through or, or not. And I still believe that we would be well-served if we had two liaisons to serve on this board to be in oversight and ears and eyes, to let the council know what's going on in the meetings, and then we would be informed in that matter. And I also thought that as a council, we wouldn't all abruptly resign at the same time. We would slowly rotate off, once we found citizens to serve on this board who fit the criteria that we were looking for in this capacity.
Thank you, madam vice mayor. Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Call me what you want to call me, I just feel better for the residents in the city of Portsmouth, that if somebody who has ties to the city of Portsmouth, someone who is a resident, has some type of skin in the game, is actually making the recommendations to the city of Portsmouth, because they understand the issues that we have in the city of Portsmouth, they live here, they work here, they would know what's going on in the city, to actually bring Portsmouth-related information back to the city council for us to make that decision. I, I can't, I'm, I'm sorry, I will never trust somebody outside of the city making decisions for the city of Portsmouth. I, I just can't, I'm not, not wired that way.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. My, my two colleagues, Vice, Vice Mayor has pointed out, and Councilman Hugel had pointed out, the ultimate decision, the final decision rests with council. So I, I can't support the additional language. I think it's, I think expertise in, in that field should outweigh any residency requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Councilman Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, I just want to get some clarification from the city attorney. So with this Portsmouth Community Broadband Network Authority, it is an authority?
That's correct.
Right, so we have Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority?
Mm-hmm.
And the Economic Development Authority?
That's right.
And so those bodies bring everything to council before they act?
No, they do not.
I didn't think so. Okay, so this myth that you all are saying they're going to bring it back to council, we are two authorities. That I don't see those things, that's what I'm saying, there's something underlying. It's not just about having experts, it's access to information. And when you see people putting out false information like that, that ought to raise your antenna. And so it's, it's not, everything's not coming back to council. So let's just, let's just put that to rest, let's put that to rest.
Okay, I just want to, I'm sorry.
Sir, 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 thank you. I'm, I'm not, okay, go ahead. Finish, please.
My, my other question, the day-to-day operations, who will be involved with the day-to-day operations of the Portsmouth Community Broadband Network Authority?
It would operate just like any other authority with meetings and, and the like. So it would be run by the chair and?
The, the, the board only meets once a month. Now, who's doing the work outside of that? Because it's been your office and the IT that have been speaking at those meetings. And I would think that's how it will continue to be, I would think that that's IT?
It would be expected that there would be city employees that would serve in those capacities, much like in EDA, there's a treasurer that works for finances, so.
Right, but this board, this board is not involved in day-to-day operations. No.
No.
It's not.
They would give direction.
Well, based on recommendations that will come from those that are involved in day-to-day operations, just like, just, just like we do here. We don't create, we don't create all of these items.
I just want to be clear. I am just the city attorney. I was at the, I was at the, the authority meeting, I was asked to bring this language.
I know.
You seem to be directing at me, I would ask.
No, well, you, I mean, you know, you're the city attorney, you, you, you're the city attorney.
I just want to be clear to the public.
You're supposed to know these things.
I just want to be clear to the public.
Back off now, don't back off. Stay in the kitchen.
This is not my, not my baby, so.
But, but, but my point is that all of this discussion about expertise and voting, that's a misnomer. I just want to point that out.
Thank, thank you, thank you, sir. And we do need to correct one thing for the record, because the EDA and PRHA, those are different types of authorities. I think that's what she wants to elaborate on. It's not the same, we're not comparing the same thing. So if you could elaborate on the point in which you, you wish to elaborate, then I'll give Mr. Tillage the floor.
I just wanted to be clear that those agencies, that the authorities that you described are state-ordained, they're in a, they're in a statute. This would be a city authority, so there's a little more leeway, but I, but what you've described is correct.
Right, right, that's, that's the point, it's their authorities. Exactly, okay.
Thank you, sir. And Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. I would actually ask if we could table this, this discussion, because, and the reason I say that is because at the last broadband authority meeting, it was made mention by our IT director, when he was discussing the power of the authority and how space or internet access would be sold to entities, that it would be the discretion of the authority. And so with that being said, to Councilman Whitaker's point, the authority does have those decisions, and those, those points don't always come back to council. And so I think for the point of clarity and the point for all seven members of council to fully understand exactly what the authority does, because it seems as if all seven of us do not understand, that we table this item until the next meeting.
What we're have, per, perhaps the proper way to handle this, based on what your request is, is to defer it?
Yes, defer, yes, sir.
Until the next meeting, in order for us to get the clarity. And, and I think that is in order to do that. So before we go to the deferment, there's still an open discussion. And Councilman Moody, sir, you, you, you have the floor.
I have to support the deferment.
Okay. So, so we're, we're not going to address the, we're going to defer the amendment. So we're going to defer the amendment, so at this time, we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Tillage to defer. We have a second.
We don't have a second.
No, Whitaker.
Mr. Moody seconded it. Did you not just?
I seconded it.
Okay, well, Dr. Whitaker, I know somebody seconded it. So we have a motion and a second to defer this item, to allow for additional discussion and clarity into our next council meeting. We've completed the discussion on this item, so I would ask that all of my colleagues, please vote electronically if you wish to defer.
I have a question. I just want to, for point of information, I want to make sure we're doing this in the right order. Okay.
Yes, we are. So the main motion was amended, that amendment is now being deferred, it was seconded, and now you need to just vote to effectuate that deferment.
I just saw faces doing like this.
The deferral is adopted seven, zero.
And the specific date of the deferral is the next council meeting.
Correct.
October the 10th.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Our next item, item twenty-three dash three zero seven. And, madam clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
A resolution authorizing the conveyance of two drainage easements encumbering property having a Suffolk tax parcel number of number thirty-five twenty to the Commonwealth of Virginia in furtherance of the construction of the SIPSA flyover ramp along Route 58.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second. Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven, zero.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now come to our new business section on the agenda, item twenty-three dash three zero eight, Boards and Commissions. Mr. Moody, do we have anything to report?
We have nothing to report tonight, mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our next item, item twenty-three dash three zero nine. And, madam clerk, would you please, our items submitted by council members, would you please read the ordinance we are considering at this time?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter Two Administration, um, sorry, of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by adding a new Article Twenty-One, establishing the Crime and Gun Violence Commission.
Thank you, ma'am. And we are in need of a motion and a second?
We have a speaker on, on the item, I believe.
We, we do have a speaker on the item, but my, my council, my council colleague has asked for the floor, so I'll let my council colleague have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor, I ask that we move to defer this item until October 10th, to allow for more collaboration amongst council members, and to allow the city manager an opportunity to play a part.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to defer this item to our next council meeting. Is there any additional discussion on this item? And also, since we, we, we're, we're voting to defer this item, we will also not have a, a speaker for this item. Seeing no further discussion, would you please vote electronically?
This deferral is adopted seven, zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Once again, we're at item twenty-three dash three oh nine, item submitted by council. And, Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Council members, we received the letter from the superintendent requesting the reversion of the funds to be re-appropriated, eleven point two million, nine million for the comprehensive career and technical education program, which we have been vocalizing and advocating for years. The school administration is looking to renovate the old DAC Center, and actually, it reminds me of the old structure that we had in place at Norcom, where you had those trades in place. And I think it's a very aggressive measure on the part of the schools, it's something we've been talking about, many campaigned on it. And I think that it is something that is long overdue for our children. Everyone doesn't want to go to college, and we ought to have a safety net for all of our students. And the request of the school system, I think, is just a matter of re-appropriating funds that they have. And the letter clearly explained exactly what those funds are to be used for. And so I'm asking, mayor, that we get a consensus from council to direct the city attorney staff to come back with a resolution for council to pass regarding the reappropriation of the school board's requests for the eleven point two million, nine million for the CTE program, and two million to address the salary compression issue.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other individuals that wish to speak on this matter? Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, so I am a big fan of career and technical education, and I really want to support the school board's request, the school superintendent's request. But there are some questions that I think we need to address. In the memo that he wrote to us, Dr. Bracy mentioned that the construction costs for the career and technical education are twelve million dollars, and they're going to make a down payment with the nine million dollars of the, of the carryover funds. What's not clear to me is how much does it cost, once we have constructed the DAC Center to be our CTE school, to outfit it, to operate it, to build the teachers' curriculum, the, basically, the operations? And so there's some additional costs that aren't addressed in, in Dr. Bracy's memo. And so I think we should spend some time understanding the whole picture, so that when we're supporting the forward motion on career and technical education, which I do support, that we understand where, where the money's coming from for, for the rest of the costs, so that we're not surprised down the road when we have two-thirds of a DAC Center refurbished and no idea where the money's going to come from. I'm sure he's got ideas, but I haven't heard what those are yet. And I think we ought to hear those before we make it, make a decision to, to invest this way.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, the funds are the school board's funds that they are asking to be re-appropriated. The school system has a superintendent, has a chief financial officer. It's not for council to try to micromanage the school system. The funds are there, these are not new funds for us. And I think that if we're going to start trying to decide whether the school system knows what it is doing, I, I think we're starting to micromanage. And I would say Dr. Bracy and his staff has, has proven, and they have the expertise in the area, it's their funds. And I think that this is something we need to move forward on aggressively. The plan is well in place, and I would again ask my colleagues to support this with consent.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So Dr. Bracy isn't going to be standing in front of civic leagues explaining how this is all going to come together. I am. And so I'd be interested to know what the rest of the plan is, that's all. And I'm not interested in micromanaging the school system, I'm just interested in understanding what's the whole plan, so that we understand how we're going to pay the bill.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Right, so I think, again, that's for, that's for the school system to address. If civic leagues have a question, I'm quite sure our superintendent's able to answer those. We are the, we are a funding mechanism for them. And I think that, again, they have the expertise in education, they have a chief financial officer, I'm quite sure they're far ahead of this than any of us. And so I would suggest that we not delay this, that we move forward with consent, so that we can get something moving that we have all been advocating about, and that is having a more comprehensive career and technical education program for our children.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
So I, I agree with Councilman Hugel when he said we will be the ones that's speaking in front of civic leagues. My sentiment goes back to the, the broadband board. When it comes to decisions being made on that, we're going to be the ones speaking on that. And if we pass what we have, we're going to be speaking on people who outside of the city are making decisions on things in the city of Portsmouth to our civic leagues. I'm, am in full support of the, of what the school board is trying to do, I ran on it. I don't know a member on council who did not run on, run on that particular topic. I think it's going to be very big for the, the children in Portsmouth, as Councilman Whitaker said earlier. All of our kids are not trying to go to college, and this gives them an opportunity to not only get a trade, get an opportunity to actually start their own business, sends them in that direction to starting their own business, where they can also help the other citizens of Portsmouth get jobs and help build our economy. So we. of Portsmouth get jobs and help build our economy, so we can get those living wage jobs that we need, not only to help support our families, but to stop the crime in the city.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hugel, you have the floor, sir.
You can be sure, I'm ready to stand in front of the civic league and explain why I think the broadband authority ought to include expertise that might live outside of Portsmouth. You can also be sure that I agree with you that the school system knows what they're doing.
Can you recognize the speaker, Mayor?
Sir?
Can you recognize the speaker? He's just speaking all to the council.
Did I say, "Councilman Hugel, you have the floor"?
I think you did.
Did I? Councilman Hugel, you have the floor, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, the school system certainly knows how to put a plan together. All I'm asking for is that we engage them and understand what the plan is.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor.
I agree with Councilman Hugel. You know, we're getting ready to make almost a $12 million decision on a whim, and we're not grounded in the facts. It would be nice to find out what the total cost of the project's going to be. I think everyone up here has supported vocational facility, but nobody's saying they don't support it. We're just saying we want more information before we make a decision on a consensus vote on $12 million. What's the outfitting going to cost? How many million of that? Usually, labor is a large part of the operation going forward, so what's the projected operational cost in salaries? We know they're having trouble hiring teachers. They're short more teachers now than they were in May. We heard that tonight. So, I would like to hear from Dr. Bracy before we make a decision on this. And maybe he has the facts and the information, but he's not here. So, before I agree to a consensus vote on $12 million, I want to hear from Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, sir. And before I go to Councilman Barnes, could I please give our vice mayor an opportunity to speak? Because many of us have spoken already, and we have not given her a chance to speak. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. We did, we all received the email, and I know our public, our citizens are wondering what in the world, what's going on. So, I think we would be well-served if we had someone from the school board, the finance team, Dr. Bracy, his team, to come with presentations and slides and everything, so that we can all be knowledgeable on what it is. We understand, and I was clear on what was being asked, but it's obvious that we would like to have more information. And I think it would be well-served if we could fit that into one of our next public work sessions to have the presentation. I think it's an exciting idea, and I think our citizens would need to know what we're faced, or what we're looking to move into in the future as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Just for informational purposes, the $12 million that they're referencing is money that we've already given to the school board. It's already money that we were prepared for them to have. It's no new money. It's still their money. We're just re-appropriating it back to them. So, I wouldn't be against a presentation of them coming, presenting, but I think that we need to move forward with this so that they can start on the process and start to get things done. So, I don't see why we can't get the presentation and still get the consensus tonight.
Okay. If I could, sir, just before we go to Dr. Whitaker, if I could provide some clarification. This is not a vote that we're taking? Okay, okay.
I just want to, thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify to you all that this consensus vote is to place this item on the next agenda as a CMR, not an item submitted by council. The CMR requires details that are very important for you all to have, and so, and that also leaves room for all the things that you are suggesting. And so, as we are continuing to discuss this, let's remember that that's what this request is.
Yes, 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 ma'am.
And that's what I mean by starting the process. So, you got to stay.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
The city attorney summed it up. It's just a request to put it on the agenda, the discussion. I think information should be shared with council. I just want to make sure we have it on the agenda. Once we have that, the discussion, we can vote.
Okay. So, I think that that makes sense. Go ahead, Councilman Moody, you have the floor.
I think it's worthy to be on a public work session where there's presentation, where the public has an opportunity to listen to how the money's going to be spent. So, I think a public work session would be the ideal venue.
Go ahead. Councilman Tillig, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Not to belabor the topic, but I think that we, I see nothing wrong with having it on the agenda for next meeting. Dr. Bracy, I'm 100% for presenting to council. I think that, you know, whether it's in a public work session or whether it's in a city council meeting, our meetings are public and broadcast anyway, so people would be able to see his presentation. And so, I think, I can't speak for other members of council, but my reason for wanting to put it on the next agenda is just so that we're not continuing to kick the can down the road. When school board asked us to reappropriate some dollars a few months ago, well, back in February, for the security system, it took us until two months ago to do so, and that was just too long. And so, I think if we move in a more expeditious manner, we will be able to get more progress done in the city. So, I would be in support of having this item put on the next meeting's agenda, and also having Dr. Bracy and the school board present at that meeting the case for why they would like to have the money. Thank you.
Councilman Barnes, and then Councilman Moody.
So, I guess my ask... My ask is, would Dr. Whitaker need to amend his ask to include that presentation?
No, not at all, not at all. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
I was going to just say, it can be on a public work session and on the agenda at the same time. That's possible. But you mentioned the security system that I think we appropriated an additional 4.2 million for. At that same time, I would like for staff to get back, or someone with the school system to get back and give us an update on whether that has been installed, whether any of it's been implemented as of yet.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Mine is another item if we're finished with this item.
Well, we're not finished with it because we have to take the consensus. But before we do that, before I call for the consensus, I would just like to put some observations out there. Couple of things that I want to make clear from my vantage point. You hear a lot about, and this is, we're all at one council. We have supported the superintendent's statement of needs every time that I've been on council, every time he is asked for whatever he needs, and we support our schools 100%. For council to ask for some clarification, just like we do on other items, I do not believe is an unreasonable request. We are not in the business of doing anything against our schools that we don't believe that is in the best interest of our students. And that's been documented, and we have conducted ourselves in that behavior. With that in mind, personally, and I'm going to, I just asked the question, I don't see any issue with us asking the questions, perhaps getting some answers, or providing some feedback that might even help things and improve the situation. This is not an us-against-them situation. I really wish we, as a council, would understand. No one up here, there are many on this dais that volunteered their time with our schools. They, outside of council, they show up to support our schools. So, we are behind our schools. If we, as council, ask questions, that's part of what the citizens require us to do. And when we ask questions, I truly believe, once you ask questions and you allow for the dialogue, you may learn some things, as we did in today's presentation. So, I just want everybody to kind of calm down a little bit. It's not about us against the schools. It's not challenging. Dr. Bracy has received awards. He's capable. He's outstanding. And many of our leadership in the school systems are likewise. There is no issue here, particularly from where I sit, as it relates to our schools. But we are charged, as a council, to be the stewards of our citizens' money. And that's where we come from. We are the fiscal agent. We will not get involved with the schools because they have a school board. They have an appointed body who takes care of that. And I think all of my colleagues are on the same page with that. So, I would just caution us to say, it's not a bad thing to maybe hold off, and let's get some information, so we are all on the same page. That's all I would say. Thank you. Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Mayor, I appreciate what you said. I don't think nobody was saying that we were against the school board or anybody. For me, it's not even about the school board or the superintendent. It's about the kids, for me. So, I can care less about all of that part of it. I just, I think this is good for our kids. This is why I'm pushing. And like Councilman Moody said earlier, we can do both. We can get the information in the work session, and we can make the decision in the council meeting on the same day. Just want to clarify certain things. I was on the school board. As far as when it comes to statement of needs and fully funding education, that didn't start to happen until 2021, because in the previous years, there were amendments that had to be made in order to get the budget through the city council. As far as '21 up until now, when I was on council and a couple of others, they've been able to actually fully fund, which means they actually put something on the table of what they actually want, and they actually get the funding without amending what they had to get it past council. That's why before 2021, you would have that particular time around budget where you had all the teachers in the crowd, the superintendent would come up here and say stuff, and speaking about making sure we passed this budget, or they would have to close schools or certain things to meet what the budget was. But from '21 until now, you haven't had any of that, those long meetings that were lasting. I mean, as a citizen, I remember coming here and staying here till 12 o'clock in the morning, 12, 1 o'clock in the morning with the teachers and with the superintendent as it pertains to the budget. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, sir. But in all fairness, even in those discussions and deliberations, the final conclusion, the final vote was to support the schools, even in those deliberations. So, the question on the floor is for consensus to have a work session on this item, in addition to in the regular session, to have a vote, CMR, to have a, right, a city manager's report on this item for us to take a vote on the reappropriation that was requested by the superintendent. So, I just need a show of hands, because this is a consensus. It is not an official vote. Thank you. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have another item that I want to share information with council. It's from the State Department of Taxation. And for our, well, city clerk, if you would, I'd like this added to the minutes, if it's possible. Okay. As you know, I have been questioning the issue with Elizabeth Minor Golf and Country Club not paying the real estate tax. And the issue has been basically swept under the rug with comments that we don't have certain documents. And so, I contacted the Virginia Department of Taxation, Mr. Roderick Compton, who is the Assistant Commissioner for General Legal and Technical Services, and I asked him to perform a compliance review, given that our city, interim city assessor, the information that was given in regards to taxes being abated and also exempted, which we never got any type of determinative answer or reason as to how that could occur. And so, what I have here for council is the compliance review from the Department of Taxation, addressing the fact that the golf course was within the Open Use Agreement Act. However, the conclusion of the Department of Taxation is that, it says, "The city appears to have improperly classified the portion of Elizabeth Minor Golf and Country Club as exempt from local taxation based on the open space agreements referenced herein." The second conclusion, "The city should have levied real property taxes on the subject property based upon its use value pursuant to Chapter 32 of Title 58.1, Article 4 of the Code of Virginia and the open space agreements referenced herein." The Department of Taxation's compliance review, it clearly shows that those exemptions and abatements that were given to the golf course were improper. And I think that this council should direct our city attorney to look into having these funds paid to the city. Given that we just came from a presentation where the Sugar Hill community was aggressively attacked with tax liens and properties were taken, and here it is, you have property owned by millionaires, owned by million, and they're not paying the tax, and there appears to have been some cooperation with a city office for this to occur. And for the state to conclude that it was improperly done, I think that now that puts the onus on this council to correct it. And I know that, city attorney, I know you've mentioned in some of your write-ups about a five-year limitation due to rollback. And that's if the property becomes non-conforming, we can go back five years and collect. I would like for you to check to see if this is a rollback issue, because it should have never occurred. That is, the taxes, this isn't a non-conforming issue. This is an issue where it appears that the owners of the golf course and those in the city assessor's office were working together, because they knew they had to pay taxes. And they signed the open space agreements showing the decreased tax that they were supposed to pay. So, they knew it. And so, for the city assessor's office not to send that bill to the city treasurer or to send it as an abatement, and then the last three years, they said it was exempt, which there's no foundation for that golf course being exempt. And so, I hope this will give you the necessary information to pursue the collection, given that if you're going to take property from poor folks because they're not paying tax, then how can you now give a tax break to millionaires when there's nothing under the law that allows for it? And so, I think that this is something that we cannot sit silent and sweep under the rug and act like it didn't exist, and it was a mistake and documents are missing. No, it was intentional. This was intentional. And so, I ask that this be submitted as part of our minutes, and that our city attorney would look into this matter, if there's a consensus on council, to look into this matter. And I don't even know if the consensus is here, because this is the State Department telling you that there's an impropriety, and you can't overlook that. And so, submit this to council.
Madam City Attorney, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilman. I would just note for the record that the findings of the authority also said that our memorandum fully outlined the proper law in this case, so I just want to say thank you. So I just want to say thank you to my team for putting that together and that was validated by the state agency that we did outline that properly. And we will do whatever council asks of us to do.
Right. And just clarification, what they're referring to is that the, the golf course did fit under the open space agreement. That, I mean, you outlined that. I mean, that, that, that was never a question whether, whether golf. Now, I would question though, should it have been a part of the open space agreement? Which is a decision left to the city assessor. I understand that. I don't think that that property really fit under a public use because we know that that golf course was created. Um, they started developing it after 1957 when the city park was integrated. And so they decided to build their little private golf course and then give this appearance that is public, when if you apply for membership, you can't just go there and walk on that golf course. You gotta apply for membership. And in order to apply for membership, you have to have a sponsor. And they can hold you up on sponsorship. And so I, I, I think that this really, um, I, I think it really did an injustice here. And, and it played on, I think, position, access and power. And it gave a wink to those who should have been paying. And there was significant collaboration with this. And so, um, look forward to your report back on this.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my question to the city attorney who's being asked to do something tonight. How long have you, uh, had this document in your possession?
Just, just as long as you all have received it.
Well, which is, uh, let, probably about five minutes or less.
That's correct.
Uh, this is a five-page document that my colleague distributed among council members. And he's asking the, the city attorney to take action based on something that none of us other than him, and it's dated August the 31st. So you've had this, uh, in your possession, uh, longer than tonight or today.
Are you asking me a question?
Uh, no.
I didn't think so because I know you didn't want the answer.
You don't, you don't, you don't have the floor.
I know, but you asked.
Sir, 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 you don't have the floor?
Right, just like Mr. Hughes did.
Please, our parliamentary procedure, I mean.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, let me, let me be clear. Let me help educate some folks who may not know. The chair is responsible for giving you the floor. If you do not have the floor, if the chair doesn't grant you the floor, you do not have the floor. And we can't all talk at the same time.
You're right, Mr. Mayor. You're right.
Um, I just want to put the information out.
You're right.
That's the way we're supposed to go. I don't want to be right. I want to do it in the proper order.
You're right, you're right.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I didn't want to debate the content. I haven't had a chance to read the five-page document. And my point was, the city attorney is being asked, uh, for an opinion or to take action on something that she just received. So I don't think that's the way, uh, to operate. Uh, and like all of us, I'll look forward for her to get back to us on her opinion on it. And, uh, also any light that the, uh, assessor can shed on it as well. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Um, before I go, I just want to make sure that this, is this topic over before I go? Now, I, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure how to be funny. I don't want to go.
Sir, to, to, to your point, sir, if, if I may, if you may allow me to elaborate. Based, based on what I heard and understand, this topic is over. But I would like to say to my colleagues, when we call for a consensus and we, we task our city staff or our appointees, it is probably a good practice for us to ensure that we've had time to look at information so that we can be informed as well. So I don't think in that regard, that's unreasonable. However, uh, we as a council can task our city, city appointees with direction. And based on what I heard that was given, uh, or requested, and there will be a follow-up. Is that fair to say?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Sir, you have the floor.
Speaking of time, um, a couple of meetings ago, I had mentioned about starting the process of, um, searching for our, our permanent city assessor's position. Um, I also had sent an email out, um, last week regarding this to, to kind of get feedback, um, as far as moving forward and that. Because I think it's, it's time for us to make sure we get all our positions permanent so that we can move forward in the city. And, and retrospect to that, um, and I'm sure the lawyer will correct me if I'm wrong, if, if it's in the proper order, I would like for us to get a consensus to move forward with my recommenda- recommendation, um, as far as moving forward with the city assessor and using the process that we used last time to get the, um, city posses- uh, city assessor position fulfilled.
He is in proper order. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. We have a request from Councilman Barnes to begin to move in a deliberate direction, um, with the information that was provided to us. So as a result, um, we need a consensus from council to move forward. Um, and just to add to that, uh, we will move in the way, once the Personnel Committee meets and all the information is given out, it will be handled in the same manner that we are proceeding at this time with all of our searches. So everyone will be included in the communication. Uh, but we have to have some time to formulate everything how we move forward. So, thank you. So if, if it's okay with everyone at this point, uh, Dr. Whitaker, did you have one?
Just a quick question. The applications as they come in, um, the email from our clerk, will council see all of the applications?
Madam Clerk?
The process is up to city council. Um, as I outlined the last time, the applications came to me and came directly to you. So you saw all of them.
We saw, okay, that's why I want to get clear. All right, thank you.
Yes. And so we, we will come together, the Personnel Committee, on the next steps. You all will be included in those next steps, whatever they may be. And then, um, we will move forward.
Just, um, for a point of information, do you mean next steps after starting the process? Um, because what I mean is, I was really specific in my email about doing it the way we did it last time as far as the wording and actually sending it out and all of that. So I'm trying to, I just want to.
I, 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 I think I understand what you're asking, but, but we haven't looked at it. I haven't looked at it yet. The Personnel Committee needs to look at it. And once we look at it, we'll, we'll, we'll send that information out to everybody.
Well, my consensus was asking to follow that process in which we had agreed, we all agreed upon in the last search. So.
I, I understand.
It's the exact same, same process that we went through last time.
I, I understand what you're asking.
So that's what the consensus is asking. So if we pass the consensus, I, that's, that would be the direction that we go and not actually waiting for the Personnel Committee to come back and for their recommendation.
Yes, sir. That's exactly what we're going to do in moving forward. But once again, we had to come together as a committee to look at the information because we have to, we, we, I don't remember everything that was done. So we'll, we'll follow the script as, as it was indicated of what we've done previously.
Okay. So, so, so are you taking a consensus vote?
Yes, sir. We're gonna take a consensus. So.
Because it's basically what Ms. White emailed to us as the process.
Understood. But, 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 but your colleague and my colleague just asked for a consensus. So I want to honor his request. Certainly, we're gonna follow the process that has been outlined. But he asked for the consensus. So in respect to his request, he has the floor. So, sir, um, we will honor your request. So all those in favor of moving in that direction, may please show, buy a show of hands. Thank you.
So was it a, was it a consensus?
Yes, sir, it was.
Are there any other items submitted by council members? Councilman Tillis, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have a question in regards to the collective bargaining presentation. Uh, do we have a date that's set for that?
Mayor, may I, may I respond to that?
Yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, thank you, Councilman Tillis, for that question. Collective bargaining is a presentation that is expected to be done not only by the city attorney's office, but in collaboration with the, the city manager's office. Um, it is about 90% policy and 5% law. And so because she's not here right now, I don't have the answer to that unless I'm looking over at James. He has some information. Okay. So if we could get that answer to you once she returns, and we'll give it to you in a report back.
All right, I appreciate it. Um, because the only question I had to ask in addition to this, and, um, if Mr. Wright, if you could pass the note along. Um, at the last meeting, um, I had asked if we could have, um, a representative from the National Union come present, um, at our meeting before our vote to discuss, uh, the pros and cons of, uh, collective bargaining. Um, and I sent that information in an email to council as well as, um, our city attorney and interim city manager. So, um, the contact information is there and I will, um, re-forward the email just so that it pops up in people's enboxes again. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other items to be submitted by council? Thank you. Our next item, item 23 dash 310, report on pending items. Sir, are there any report on pending items? Thank you. Then we've come to item 23 dash 1, excuse me, 23 dash 311, non-agenda speakers. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light here beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of city council, staff or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker tonight, Mr. William Britt. Sir, you come forward, state your name. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of city council and city officials. My name is William Britt, Sterling Point. I got a, I got a major problem. Uh, we still have not done anything about crime. We, we, you know, I was sitting here listening to the police chief, uh, the other day on the news and all that. And it's really concerning. Now, the last time I was here, I made it. I was multitasking on my desk. I write this stuff down. I put a one in front of my figures when it came down to murder rate la- last year, which is 42. I had said 142. So I was incorrect. It's 42. We are now on track to surpass that number by the end of the year. And this stuff came straight from the news. That's basically 3.8 murders in the city every month, which is high. All right? The opioid death rate in this city is number seven, uh, is the highest in the seven cities. It's number four in the state. So we got a major problem with that. Now, I do agree 100% with Dr. Whitaker on people paying their taxes properly. There should be no tax breaks. Every quarter, I'm passing, passing out a lot of money. And it kind of like makes me mad on the taxes I gotta pay. Uh, so I agree with you 100%. Um, we also have 98 police officers shy still. The way to resolve that problem, this, this city has a hell of a bad stigmatism behind it. So you're losing police officers to other jurisdictions. Well, if you want to correct that problem, let's pay the police officers above what everybody else is offering. And the people with tenure, 15 to 20% above. Because I'll tell you, if we don't get a handle on this, this crime in the city, Mrs. Burke's, uh, mother, she put her neck out for this casino. If they build one in Norfolk, which does not have the murder rate that we have, number one, the state of Virginia, we got a problem. We need to get this unhandled because if we don't, that's going to be another hindrance on this city. Money coming out of the pocket of the people who live here. Number two, I, I passed out, gave some pictures, um, to a lot of businesses we lost here in the city. We're not doing anything to promote businesses in the city. All right? You got Virginia Beach that just got another, um, project which allows another, what, 1,000 people, Suffolk? We're not doing anything to bring industry in here. We're chasing it away. We're talking about businesses that have been here for a long time that are now closing their doors. All right? Or moving other, uh, uh, elsewhere. So we got a major problem with that. Um, I'm sitting here listening to you guys talk about all this stuff on the agenda and all that. We're not talking about nothing pertaining to what our problems are. I don't care about broadband. I don't care about any of that. I mean, I'm gonna literate when it comes down to computer. All right? So I care more about what are we gonna do for the people in the city? What are we gonna do about getting the crime on hand? What are we gonna do about people paying their fair share taxes? What are we gonna do about, uh, businesses, we're losing businesses left and right? What are we gonna do about hiring more police officers? All right? It's a situation, I have not seen once somebody who the police have to put under arrest, go over there and do it voluntary. Yeah, let me put my hands behind my back. Sometimes you gotta use force to make an arrest. All right? It, it's, it's a travesty, but it happens. So we need to start going over and promoting the police department. All right? This revolving door with city officials, city managers, city police, the deputy chief, chiefs and all that, it's ridiculous. We're, once again, people look at us as being a joke of the, the seven cities. Uh, we got a major problem. Um, we do not need more vape shops. I mean, I see all these vape shop popping up every corner now. All right? I could care less. I don't do drugs. I don't drink. All right? We got a problem. And since you guys brought the thing about the school board, you know, we have, we're not even meeting state standards. All right? On SATs. We got a problem there. So if we're not meeting state standards, how is the school superintendent doing the job? All right? And why are we going over committing this stuff to him to? Now, I agree with VOTEC. All of you and I, when we were in school, we had VOTEC. Now, VOTEC is a good thing. Maybe we could, the shipyard to, to play along and give some money into supporting this program because they need people for the shipyard. The shipyards, you look at all these ads and stuff, they need people. We need people trained, auto body, auto mechanics, which pay good money. All right? I know a lot of people who are in the industry. I'm in the industry. All right? And I make money. I make more money than a lot of attorneys I know and doctors that I know. All right? We need these jobs. We need to bring these jobs into the city. All right? Let's go over there and make something good of the city of Portsmouth. Let's put something advanced and say, hey, look at what cities, look, look at what Portsmouth is doing. Let's surpass Norfolk, Port, I mean Chesapeake, Newport News and all them. I mean, it's crazy. This is crazy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
I, I agree with you, um, as far as the, the vape shops. So I like the car washes or, or the oil places, 7-Elevens, all of them too. Um, just for clarification purposes though, um, as far as, um, crime rate, especially homicide rate, and I, I talked to some of my council members in Norfolk. So I don't want them to take this the wrong way, but I just want to clarify. Their, their homicide rate is worse than ours.
What they're going by per capita?
Um, I, I, I'm not saying anything to you right now. I'm just talking to the audience. Um, as far as our, um, school system, um, I, I, we, we gotta stop putting that notion out there that we have a horrible school system. We do not have a horrible school system. I would not send my children to Portsmouth Public Schools if we had a horrible school system. We have a good school system.
Statistics show it.
Sir, could you please have a seat?
Thank you. Um, so we, we, we have to stop putting that notion out there, especially, um, when we don't, if we don't have, um, children in the school system. As a parent in the school system, as somebody who graduated from Portsmouth Public Schools, um, I like our school system. I wouldn't want to send them to nowhere else. And believe me, there's some bordering cities that have bad school systems. Um, as far as, um, some of the topics that we discussed tonight, how it relates to the crime, um, when it comes to our broadband, there's some economic development and that, that really helps, um, with living wage jobs to help our citizens, um, come out of the poverty because poverty leads directly to crime. I mean, also as far as our school system, of course, we know if we're educating our kids at a high level, they're more likely to be successful in life and that addresses some of the crime issues. So these are some of the important topics that we are discussing that deal with the crime issue. And we did just have. And we did just have a meeting discussing the crime. It could have been a lot more that was discussed, but we were discussing it. I'm looking forward to collaboration of every department with addressing those issues. But I just want to make sure, you know, I'm somebody who's very critical of council and everything that we do, but I don't want to take away from what we are doing and what the city is doing and what the school system is doing, and so on and so forth.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Sherman Tyler. Sherman Tyler. If you will come forward, state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
Hey, how you doing? I'm Sherman Tyler. I reside in the Prentice Park community in Portsmouth, Virginia. Yes, sir. Sherman Tyler. I live in the Prentice Park area of Portsmouth, Virginia. I'm not really a speaker, but after hearing the chief speak last week, and also a comment that was made by council about Ms. Morales, you know, it kind of got me a little hot. But, you know, I've been in Portsmouth my whole life. I haven't made all the right decisions in my life, but, you know, I thank God in my late, late years I turned right, and I kept great. But, you know, the chief stated the other day that, you know, that he shouldn't be taking any dots or his police department shouldn't either. But, you know, and I haven't heard anybody come up here and say this yet. You know, the bridge happened broken between my community and the police for decades. I'm talking, I have seen some stuff in my days, you know, I'm talking about the sicking of the police dogs after a person comply. I mean tasing of somebody because they made you run, and they already gave up, and you tase them. I've seen mace, you know, in people's face. I have seen officers come in my community. I'm not talking about 2023. I'm not talking about '22. I ain't talking about '21. I'm talking about when the officer was allowed to come in our communities. Dells Home, Nickin Park, Swanson Home, Prentice Park, Parker Avenue, and run amok and do what they want to do, you know? And the bridge ain't never been fixed. The people sometimes sit right there at the crime scenes and see the crimes committed, and they're not drug dealers. They're not gang members. They're decent people that care about their city, but they don't trust you, because you ain't fixed the bridge. You ain't fixed the bridge. I have seen some, I'm talking about when the officer was allowed to run amok and do what they want to do, like that little black boy that got killed at Walmart. You think the people in Portsmouth forgot that? We ain't forgot that. That boy ain't never go home to his mama no more, versus that little black boy go kill, I mean go shoot a white cop, female cop, and she survived, I don't see it on talk shows, and get 80 years. He will never come home no more. So who life really matters? Who life really matters? Am I your equal? I can't be your equal. When you killing us and get two and a half years, but I shoot you, and you survive, and I get 80 years, am I your equal? No. That bridge got to be fixed, y'all. You got people right now that want to call y'all and say, I seen that murder. I seen who killed that little boy, but they don't trust you. Get with them groups like Big Homies. Get with them groups like Unseen Tears. Get with them groups like Ceasefire, and let them bring you into their communities and talk to them folks. They know the people. They're people from the streets. They can take y'all and bring y'all right into them grandmamas that seen y'all beat the crap out of their grandsons. They can bring to the mommas that seen you beat the crap out of their sons. And they can fix that things against y'all, and so they'll call you next time and say, yeah, I seen that murder. I helped you. I saw who killed that little boy. I will get on the stand and testify. But that y'all, let's stop playing. That bridge, we gotta learn how to trust y'all again. And y'all did this. I ain't talking about the ones that y'all just hired. I'm talking about generations of beatings, generations of being mistreated, and it was never fixed. And Thon a Black Chief in 2016 ain't fixed the problem. We need more to fix the bridge. Get with these groups right now and let them bring you into our communities, man, and get that thing right. So people will call you and say, I seen the crime happen. I go on that stand for you, and I believe in you. Fix their hearts. Let them know that they can trust you, that they can, it's a brand new shopping town. My name is Chief Jenkins, and we ain't gonna hurt you no more. We there for you. We believe in you. And that's it. I thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Tanya Godwin. Tanya Godwin? Is Tanya Godwin here? Our next speaker is Maurice Wilson. Maurice Wilson. Sir, you come forward and state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Board of city council members, my name is Maurice Wilson. I'm proud to be here in front of you guys to be able to speak. Wow, this hurts. Recently, I went to the police department, and I asked for them to investigate illegal search and seizure. Nothing was done. I asked the officer again, why are you doing illegal search without a warrant? I went to four different people in the city, and they all turned me down. I went to, I wrote the names, dates, and times. Since the illegal search and seizure happened in Portsmouth, but the boat ended up in Norfolk, I went to Norfolk. The officer gave me their office, they wouldn't give me their name, but they gave me their badge number, 29293 and 38025. The other officers told me that it's a Portsmouth problem, even though it's in Norfolk. I went to SeaWorld and asked them why they allowed the search and seizure. SeaWorld told me to get off their property. My boat stolen from SeaWorld. I had a contract with the city to pick up my boat by the 20th. Make sure it's the right date. I had a contract with the city that I signed in good faith to pick up my boat by the 15th of August. My boat was stolen by the 13th, okay? The people who stole my boat lives right behind this building over here at Ocean Marina. They were mad because I couldn't get my boat. They wouldn't let me allow my boat to be parked over there, Mr. Richard Monday. They said, they called me Bojangles, like as into a derogatory word, like they jingle. We're not gonna let you have your boat here. They ripped my boat off twice, okay? Not only they ripped my boat off twice, they took it, stole it in city custody. Because SeaWorld told it, well, the city told it to SeaWorld. They took my boat from SeaWorld, city custody. So you guys are responsible for that boat that you guys had towed over there. They took it from over there, stole it, drove it behind City Park, and dismantled it. I have the pictures here of what my boat looks like before and after.
Sir, sir. Mr. Wilson.
I got five minutes.
Mr. Wilson, Mr. Wilson.
Can I talk?
Sir, sir. Right now, you're speaking to something that we cannot affect the city council.
It is affecting the city council, because these same people showed pictures of my son in school and threatened me if I came here and talked.
Sir.
Okay, so that has city council written all over it. I cried to you guys.
Sir, you are out of order. You are out of order.
I'm out of order, sir. I'm just trying to tell my story.
Mr. Mayor, just for point of order, can you have him to meet with the city attorney?
I tried to meet with them.
And the city attorney report back to us on the issue.
I even wrote statements to the police department. Witness, I have somebody from her office threaten me, from her office, Mr. Maringer, okay? I had him threaten me in front of a police officer.
Sir.
And you're telling me I got a problem?
Sir, Mr. Wilson, sir.
Why can't I talk, sir? I tried to talk to you this morning. You ran.
Sir, you are out of order.
You ran.
And I'm gonna ask that you take your seat.
Okay, first of all.
I'm gonna ask that you take your seat, or I'm gonna have you removed from the chamber.
I'm an American, okay?
You are, sir.
Okay.
But you are out of order.
We, the people of the United States of America, in order to form a perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility.
Would you please remove this individual from the meeting?
All right. But you won't see the video. Here's the video you guys telling me.
The attorney already has his information.
Right now, unless your officer's saying it.
I have his information. We had a pending case together, and we have another pending case. This isn't something that council should be involved in.
Here's your officer's telling me. Okay? She's the only person that did something. She's the only person stood up for me, okay? My man, you ran. She stood up, and she apologized. You didn't.
Mr. Wilson, we'll continue to be in touch with you. Please just go with the, we'll address it.
I know, sir, and you're right. You understand? Next time those guys, don't threaten my kid.
Mr. Wilson, please don't do a threat. That would be a crime.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Joanne Clark. Ma'am, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. That's a tough act to follow. In the words of a mentor of mine from many years ago in the city of Chesapeake, Dr. Willa Bazemore, she often would start the meeting by saying, "Well, it appears the governors are not governing." Every time I watch you all, I feel the same sympathy. The citizens feel the same sympathy. It broke my heart last week when the chief of police was here. And instead of you all acting calmly, listening, and you did show some small act of support, things went off the rails, and he walked out, and all the men and women in blue that were here, their jaws opened to the floor, unbelievably left into the lobby. Policing in the city is not easy. It's not easy in any city in the United States to police anymore. Governing is hard. It is probably the most difficult thing there is to do. But what I've watched in the eight years that I have been back to Portsmouth, I find it quite, it's quite unnerving. It's disturbing at best. So I have some suggestions to make, that maybe you all can appear more professional so that when somebody might actually come to town and watch this council, and they want to bring their businesses, bring their families, they may say, well, they're trying, but right now, you all are not trying. In the last four years, it's been defer, delay, deny, no consensus. Now, I have watched over 40 years of city council governing from Virginia Beach, city of Norfolk, city of Suffolk, and many years, thousands of hours in Chesapeake. You all need to watch other cities to see what they do. I know, for an example, Debbie Ritter, planning, and the city manager kind of just grin when she comes in the door in the department. But that gal does her homework before she shows up to a meeting. She knows the answer to anything before she asks the question. It would be nice if you would also make a resolution, like our sister city of Chesapeake, that during election time, you limit those who are up for reelection, their time of how many times they address an item. There were a lot of theatrics here because it's election time. I think it would have been interesting for those to get the same amount of speaking points as for the many meetings that they missed, that they may have had more information on. So here's my suggestion. Limit speaker times during all election seasons so that they only have a certain amount of pertinent questions. If they had done their homework, they would know the answer. Be prepared for the meeting. At least show that you put some effort into it. We all do. Before we come, we look at the agendas, we prepare our speeches, then you defer things. And then, please, watch other city councils. You all can do better than this. Our chief of police was just, had his heart on his shoulder. The citizens are supporting him. I think that we need your support too. The meeting on July 11th, when you had a use permit to give to someone who had already violated a permit, and the chief asked you by letter to please not give that permit, because he knew that that use, that permit, would be contrary to the quality of life for those residents who live in the area. He knew it would create some form of conflict. And the last thing the police need to worry about is trying to deal with just things that are noise-related, maybe a few people who have consumed alcohol. You could have eliminated that issue by simply not granting that permit.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Tony Goodwin. I apologize. Councilman Barnes, did you want the floor?
I'll be brief.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say, and this is just for the citizens, when council members ask questions, it's not because they didn't do their, do their, didn't study the work or didn't go over it beforehand. A lot of the times, those questions come from actually going over it beforehand and listening to the presentation. And also, as for informational purposes, to make sure that the citizens know what's going on, because a lot of the times, we talk about certain things up here, and we're keying in on points, but we're not actually letting the citizens know what particular matter that we're going to. It's kind of like earlier when the mayor mentioned about the broadband situation, and he went into more details so the citizens can understand. So I just don't want people to think that more, having a lot of questions means not knowing the information. A lot of the times, I would say for this council, because a lot of them are pretty prepared, it means that they read over the work, and they looked at it, and they wanted to come and address those questions here in front of the public so that the public can be aware of what's going on. And secondly, I just want to say, I don't think any member of council does not support our police chief. I think we all, that's one of the things that we all agree on, that we support him fully.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Goodwin, sir, you have the floor. Please state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff. My name is Tony Goodwin. I live in the Parkview section of the city. It was about 26 months and probably four city managers ago that I came to this podium as a reactionary with the request of you, looking for answers and solutions to the crime problem back then, and we're still talking about it today. With the report that the chief did give last Tuesday, it is something that we call basically crisis, and we need to get involved and get it done. At that time, I discussed a solution based upon the reaction of a Memorial Day shooting that happened within feet of the Parkview Elementary School and in 2021. And then, right after that, in the next following weekend, or at least within a week or so, we had three young kids on that playground that also were involved in a shooting that it's just tragic to know that it happens on school property. So I brought to your attention as maybe a solution, that's not as... So I brought to your attention as maybe a solution, that's not as, I guess you could say, difficult to actually work on. And that is the safe free, uh, safe school zones, where we talk about the, a program that's been around since 1982, 1996 is reaffirmed by the Clinton administration to make it a gun-free school zone. And I think Mr. Wright and I sat down and talked about what it would look like to just create a safe zone in a community that can actually feel like they get something accomplished when they call and say, "There's crime happening right in front of our door." Or, in most cases, a lot of people don't report crime because they're afraid of retaliation. So I'm imploring upon you to see if that's, this is something we can talk about again twenty-six months later to support what the police are doing in the field. And again, so as to where our chief doesn't have to come up with a report such as last Tuesday, which again, is an extreme eye-opener and we know it's happening, we know we have a problem, we know we have to acknowledge the problem first before we start to solve it. And I will say with all heartfelt, I feel, you know, this is very important. And I think there's obviously an eager, you know, I think we've got signs up around Parkview Elementary School, so thank you very much to that. But I think there's a lot more schools in this city, a lot more daycares in this city that could have that same attack and continue that process because I think we fell short of finishing the project as we talked about. So that I know that there was an attempt, but I think there is still work to be done. And that's just one little tool that we could possibly tell the community, we are conscious of the situation, we are obviously working together to solve this because it's not just one, just like the chief said, it's not just his department, it's all departments. It's everyone involved, including and more importantly, the citizens of this city to basically bring back some civility to our city streets. So, thank you very much for your time, for the time tonight, and I appreciate you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Sergio Neal. If you would come forward, sir, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, mayor, members of council, the public. My name is Sergio Neal. I'm at 1420 Elm Avenue in this good city in the Prentice Park. First of all, I wanted to say thank you to our chief for giving the public, this council body, some feedback on what the crime issues are and where they stand and what their department is, what his department is doing to better the situation. I do feel that however that he was attacked. And what some people may try to put off as, "Oh, we don't have any ulterior motives. We fully support his department," whatever the case might be. I feel that some people have, they'll support as long as they get what they want done in the direction they think it should be done. But let's be real, there's only one police chief in this city. And I feel that while he receives feedback, he should be allowed to operate in a manner which ultimately he sees fit with the direction of his law enforcement experience, with the members of the public and all. It shouldn't be a, "We'll support you as long as you're doing what we want you to do." Because just like we all know, unless you do this, unless you do that job every day, day in and day out, I don't think, experience is the best teacher. You can read something all day long, but until you walk that beat every day, until you're putting your life on the line every day, until you're put in compromising positions where you sometimes have to battle with morality versus law enforcement, I think we gotta let that come into account. And I get it, you know, people try to make it look good, "Oh, we're not attacking, we're not attacking." But for the chief to have to come off the way he did and say out his mouth, "I may not have a job after this," that speaks volumes to the reputation that this city has. When good people come here and have a heart for this city, if they give some feedback that may rub something the wrong way, oh, somebody's coming for their job and we all know how that goes down. Let's rewind to the previous council that set up here before this one. But, you know, we're moving on. We're gonna get better. I get it because voters got smarter with this election and we see the end result of that. I just ask voters, get smarter again, come the next council cycle and we really clean this council up to really move this city where it needs to go. Because you make no mistake about it, I'm not coming up here for anybody's seat. That's not my thing. But I want to really educate the public as to how some people spend things to make it seem like as if, you know, "Oh, it's all good." The other thing that was said was that there are wolves in our community. And we do. We have them. We legitimately have people that do not care other than to seek, kill, and destroy to make themselves a dominant factor. They, that's been the history since the foundation of man. But let's be clear, they're not only in the streets. We have some people in political positions. They just do it in a different manner. See, while they use guns, knives, cars, whatever, to commit their crimes on the street, some people try to use their ulterior motives and commit crimes as elected officials. And the people that suffer the most are the citizens. So let's be clear, if we're gonna call a spade a spade, or whatever the case might be, let's be perfectly honest with ourselves. See, don't try to paint something to get the heat off of you because we have not forgot, some of y'all got off by luck, are really getting off by luck. Really getting off by luck. And I'm gonna tell you all right now, don't just look at the council. Go to the state as well because, see, the state, your state elected officials need some feedback as to what's going on in our law books to clean some stuff up so we don't have people that should not be in certain positions, in those positions. So I just want y'all to be mindful that some of your angst and grace and heartache comes from some state loopholes that were created. For certain people to remain where they are or to come back, because, but it's okay, you know, we get it. But that's why there's always elections and there's always people that need to be educated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mark Godoldig Yotrowski.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, council, and other neighbors. I want you to reconsider doing business in the sixth-floor conference room. The numbers show that COVID infections are increasing and that room is too small for people to be sitting together in. You need to have your work sessions back here. When the numbers are going down, it's a different issue, but now they're rising. So I ask you to take that into consideration. Secondly, I have never presented myself as an expert on crime. That's not my field of expertise. But I will offer a couple of observations about the condition of our citizenry, not just in Portsmouth, but across the country. The Census Bureau published a very interesting study that they did showing that when we had enhanced child tax credits being provided in the federal tax code in 2021, the child poverty rate in this country dropped by forty-six percent. Now that's been rolled back. Why are we doing that? How does the country benefit from having children in poverty? Health benefits were being granted through Medicaid with a more relaxed set of guidelines. Now that we're out of the emergency situation, they're being dropped. Again, another counterproductive change. We can lose a multi-billion-dollar aircraft that just disappears on a test flight, but we can't put the money into our people. I mean, this is part of the environment that breeds violence. You had a presenter here talking about the early childcare center, about the fact that they're running $10,000 a month short. There is also a newspaper article not long ago about how middle-income people in New York City are straining to pay for childcare. This is a national problem and the national government and the state governments need to be doing more. Why is that something that you can influence through your municipal organizations? Localities need to speak with one voice and say, "Look, federal government, Commonwealth of Virginia, we need to invest more in our people and it will improve the conditions, the quality of life in our localities. You have the resources that we lack." That's not to say we can't do anything in Portsmouth to make things better, but what we can do collectively on a larger scale can have really important implications and results. So please, when you go to your municipal league meetings, when you go to the National League of Cities and the National Conference of Mayors, beat the drum. We need to be doing this as a country. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Donna Biggs. If you come forward, state your name and address. You have five minutes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Donna Biggs and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Tonight, I would like to review with the representatives of our city that were originally by police service areas with voting precincts listed in each of the service areas for the people to be protected and served. Another organizational way was for individuals to run for a position, to become elected, to be able to sit in front of the people, to assist them to self-govern. There are many ways for the elected to serve his or her people, to have a conversation with him or her, or his or her civically, to serve on a board or commission. What does that mean to serve on a board or commission? I don't know what that means because looking at the organization and structure of the city, there are three columns. There is one column that the city manager has oversight over, which includes the Community and Economic Development Department. The divisions under the department are Economic Development, which includes the Economic Development Authority and the Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission. Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority is listed in the Boards and Commission Manual, but this authority is not listed under any department. And from the prior meeting, you can see how the PRHA really destroyed this city. The other department is Permits and Inspection. Looking at the first column under the deputy city manager, there's also the Community and Economic Development Department. Under this department, this division is the Planning Department. The Planning Department has a list of five boards and commissions. Board of Zoning Appeals and Administration, Downtown Design Team, Historic Preservation Commission, Planning Commission, and the Wetland Board. Leadership is all about communication and working together to achieve a goal of being economically self-sufficient. As a reminder, look at the top of the organizational structure of the city. It reads that "We, the people, are the source of our local government." Us. Where would anyone get that idea? Article 1, Bill of Rights. "We, the people, made the Bill of Rights to exercise our sovereign powers, which is the basis and foundation of our government, that all power is vested in and consequently derived from the people, that magistrates are their trustees and servants and at all times answerable to them. That government is instituted for the common benefit, protection, and security of the people which is capable of producing the greatest degree of happiness and safety and is most effectually secured against the dangers of maladministration." This organizational structure of our city is to guard the people against maladministration. As you can see by the structure of the city, the Community and Economic Development Department's divisions are not under one department regarding the economic development of the city. It is divided under two managers. This has created maladministration in the city. It is my right and duty to pursue my happiness and safety to help me God and acknowledge how that maladministration is being done in the city. Also, the lack of having a representative in each one of our former police service areas is another example of maladministration. And I have organized the city's former police service areas, for your knowledge, and you can read it here. And we are not being represented. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Wayne Wright. Mr. Wright, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes, sir.
All right. Good evening. Wayne Wright, 230 Golden Star Lane. I'm a resident of Newport at Victory Community. And I'm here today to talk about some of the issues that Newport's been having recently and kind of some of the higher-level stuff. First and foremost, a couple of weeks ago, I sent a few of you a few emails concerning a person or persons who had taken an interest in our HOA Board of Directors. Just as a quick update, the community pulled together and found an attorney to try and resolve this matter. But it's really frustrating and just ridiculous that, you know, we pay taxes, our mortgage, HOA fees, everything like that. And then, as a community, on top of that, we have to pull together $3,000 to $5,000 to try and do what's right because a person has taken whatever interest in our community. So, next topic. I'm just trying to get an understanding of what is the goal, vision, or timeline or future of Newport? Because you have a community that was initially developed in 2006, 2007 for sixteen hundred homes and you're about fifteen, twenty years later and we're only sitting at 460. So I'm just, in, I think, 115 acres of undeveloped land. So I'm just trying to understand, is that land going to be sold and developed? I remember, I think it was December 2021, it was supposed to go up for auction around that time and then the auction boards came down for some reason. So, again, is it, is the number sixteen hundred or is it 460? Because as the residents of Newport, it impacts us. When you have a community that was meant for, like I said, sixteen hundred, with the common areas and amenities we have in that community, we're struggling right now to support them with only the 406 people we have. Additionally, the areas owned by the developers still around there are not being maintained. The best example is if you ride down Brittle Rush Drive, right next to Victory Elementary School, that little strip is still owned by, I think, Cygnus Newport. School, that little strip is still owned by, I think, Cygnus Newport, and it's just overgrown with grass and weeds. You can't walk down that block. So I think I just, me and other people of the community would like to see, you know, a plan going forward and have an idea of what's in store for Newport. Next, we kind of mentioned it before, but the Development Authority. So there's an additional one, the Newport Community Development Authority. And I'm kind of fuzzy on myself, but from my understanding, as a resident of Newport, I pay a supplemental tax that's supposed to support infrastructure that's being developed in that area. And I'll tell you, I'm not seeing a good return on my investment in that. Again, looking at Brittle Brush, that road is not developed, and the townhomes on that road were finished two years ago. I live on Golden Star. Golden Star was just finished, was just paved, I think, earlier this year, and still along Golden Star, you have streetlights that have been installed that just have never worked. And additionally, you still have sidewalks that are already kind of showing wear and tear. So I think as residents, we need to understand where our money is going. I think the last Newport CDA meeting was in May of 2021, so that just needs to get going. I'm not sure, well, I think according to the agenda minutes that are posted on the website. So we just need some sort of information of where our money's going. Kind of the last thing, I would like to thank Chief Jenkins and the Portsmouth Police Department. Recently, in mid-August, we had our HOA Board of Director elections, and the person or persons involved tried to delay or postpone the election. We, as a community, decided, no, we're going to have this election, so that day, we congregated and peacefully assembled and held our election. Somebody called the police on us for trespassing. The police showed up. We explained to them what was going on, why we were there. The person who called the trespassing complaint was not there, so the police said, "All right, go about your business. You have every right to be here." So again, I thank Chief Jenkins and the Portsmouth Police Department. So to close up, I know you guys are, you're busy with everything going on. Mind if I finish?
If you could finish your thought, sir, please.
Yeah, I understand.
Finish your thought.
You guys are busy with everything going on in this city, and I get that, but we need help. Newport is struggling, but we have the people who are willing to put in the work to kind of turn it around, but we need your guys' help. So if you help us, and then help us help you, and then help us help us.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. To Mr. Wright's concern about the build-out that has not occurred, I could see where that's certainly putting a burden on the citizens there. I would like for the city attorney to get back with us on why that auction never occurred, and what are the future plans to get that property back on the tax rolls as far as a finished development?
Okay, that matter with the CDA is in litigation, and so that is the holdup on that. With respect to the build-out or anything regarding the HOA, that is outside the purview of this council, aside in terms of forcing them to do anything, but obviously, as concerned citizens, that is something that you all can look into. But I can't speak to the HOA, but I can tell you that the CDA is in litigation.
And the auction was being to the benefit of who?
I don't want to talk about the facts of the case in open form, but I will definitely privately reveal what you need to make a decision.
Maybe we could get an update in closed session?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And if I would, I'd like to say something to Mr. Wright. Certainly, we appreciate you coming before council to share your concerns. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Lavanda Satterwhite. Our next speaker is Nicole McGill. Nicole McGill. Our next speaker is Merle Rutledge. Mr. Rutledge, sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Merle Rutledge, 2024 Republican way, conservative, Virginia. Anyway, let me give out this speech. First of all, the city of Portsmouth has been not worse than Chesapeake. Trust me, Chesapeake is a lot worse, so I think that's a correction, and I think we have one of the best police chiefs in the entire Commonwealth of Virginia, and Chief Jenkins. Now, this message was meant for the LGBTQ community, but now dealing with crime and all that other stuff, I think it applies to everybody. Now, I believe everyone in this room is tired of fighting their wars from Richmond to DC. Governor Youngkin, behind his policy, had a chance, like everybody else in the room, to address the public on his policies and goals for the schools, to include the one we are here for today. He chose to cancel his public event and did a made-for-TV commercial that only those that RSVP could attend. Week after week, I see everyone in this room fight some war for a policy of make-believe led by cowardice. The public isn't influencing this policy, it's elections. I will not support a policy that the author won't face the scrutiny from those that carry on this war. Everything we fought against, the schools, from books to bathroom use, is still in the schools and has remained. However, as I speak, I don't exclude that just because you condone wrong doesn't make it right. We had no need for this policy like we didn't for others. This means the parent matters policy. It's became political party and agendas, not curriculum. These discussions and policies run directly in conflict of a family matter and not a government one. I call on you to put Governor Youngkin's policy into a dumpster and put Virginia common sense in this place. Schools are meant to teach, not tolerate sociology or beliefs that forces others. We won't just have adoption of church and state with me. It needs to be a clear separation of schools and families. We do know there's a difference between a boy and a girl. Anything else is created and manufactured. The complications give you cover that I won't. When we wake up, and we do, we wake up all even. Our last day can be today. All that's left is a circus that once privileged over anyone else for another day. How about the threats, suicides, addictions, and bullying the rest go through? The need to go to school and learn like everyone else is a privilege, not a sexual preference. The disabled and handicapped deserve privilege. Our veterans deserve privilege. Our elderly deserve privilege. An able-bodied person without those disadvantages earns their privilege and doesn't continue to cry about excuses. You have the opportunity to go to school, you don't have the opportunity for schools to take care of your crying and excuses at home and in the world. Parent-child school, you can be weak or strong. Your excuses and pity party is the same problems these politicians have. You're preaching to the choir. You think we all have faced a threat to our safety at some point in our life? That's life, and you can decide to cry and complain for the rest of yours, not mine's. What this means is basically, for every single community or neighborhood, watch the people who are the oldest and knows everybody in those communities, needs to knock on every single door and get people out and speak to them. Have each other speak and find out where the problem is. We cannot excuse murder, threats, rapes, and all this anymore. No more excuses. You either come to those meetings on your own community and block, stop blaming council, stop blaming police, stop blaming everybody else, point the finger at yourselves. I've watched and heard a 14-year-old girl die in Chesapeake, right along the lines of Portsmouth. I'm fed up, very fed up. This is the way we get our city back. This is the way we take back the night from criminals. We get everybody on board, block by block, and if you're not on board, then shut up. You talk to everybody, get everybody out there, and find out where the dispute is, so you can go as a parent, as a leader, to the person who they have a problem with and resolve it. Our kids are dying over no reason, and they're making excuses, just like politicians are making excuses. The real leadership is silent today, and what I'm saying to everybody else, we all got these problems.
Thank you, sir. That was our last speaker for the evening. Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
This is out of what I should have did in items submitted by council, but Mr. Tola came up to me earlier and asked that we, the benches that we have outside, that we make them higher, so that we get them higher, so that our citizens can, don't have to struggle to get up, because they're very low, and when you have a seasoned individual, it may be harder for them to get up when they sit down, so they don't want to sit down. So that's why he bought his little chair, and so I just, I know I told him that I was going to do it, I didn't want to mess up on that promise for you, so that's me doing that for you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our speakers for this evening, and that, excuse me?
I called the office and signed up for a book today, Erica Nessler.
If I called and actually signed up, it was a party or what?
Well, unfortunately, you know, we have a speaker list, they weren't indicated on the speaker list. Councilman Tillage, did you have something you want to say?
I was just going to ask if we could just let them speak, since they did show up.
I think then, if that's the privilege, then we will allow for you to speak. Ms. Nessler, if you would come forward and state your name and address, you have five minutes.
I'm Erica Nessler. I live in the Port Norfolk area. Hopefully, I can do this faster than five minutes, because I know you all are tired, you have big problems in your world. I appreciate your service to the city. I know it's hard to sit up here and listen and for extended periods of time like this, and I'm sure it was just some kind of housekeeping order, you know, glitch, because I called the number that is listed, and I spoke to a person. Anyway, this is basically a housekeeping thing. Previous meetings, you all decided that trash pickup in the neighborhoods which have alleys would be discontinued. At that meeting, you expressed that there would be good communication going out to the citizens as to when this was going to happen, and notified them through their water bill and other means of communication. And a form would be circulated to the people who are not capable of manhandling their trashcans all the way from the alley, all the way back to the front yard over a curb. None of this has happened. Sorry, I've wrote this much nicer thing, but I'm trying to go fast. None of this has happened. I spoke with Ms. Watson, and she gave me the old form, because I was told it was going to be revised, but the revised form has not come out. This one was written in 2016, and it's, it tasks the person with going to a doctor's appointment and getting doctor's notes for every single person in the house stating that they can't move trashcans. That would take at least 30 days to get that done. Anyway, the communication hasn't gone out. What I'm asking respectfully is that you postpone this thing until you can release good communications to the citizens. We still have our concerns about trashcans going into the street versus the alley, because of the fact that most of us don't have driveways, we have no curb cuts, and it's parking on each side of the street. So that pretty much means you're putting the trashcans really far into the street. So I'm just expressing that. We understand that you went with this ruling, that you, you know, did not grant our wishes that we had expressed at the meeting, so we will comply. Our neighborhood has put out in our handwritten, our hand-delivered newsletter, that's delivered by volunteers to 1,000 homes, that you would be beginning this, but there are other neighborhoods that have alleys that this affects. So I'm asking, you know, we support all your efforts, you know, we support national, you know, the cleanup of the alleys, the cleanups of the cities. We ask you all to come, talk to us at our meetings and keep us informed. We try to be good stewards to the city and to you all, and sometimes we feel a little abandoned, but we continue to try to support you. So if you could please support us on this, at least not rolling it out without communicating properly. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Nessler. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for bringing this to our attention, Ms. Nessler. We were assured that that communication would be there. Obviously, it hasn't been. And Mayor, I would like to call on staff to see if that can be delayed until that communication does occur. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Ma'am, if you would come forward, state your name and address. I'm sorry, I didn't have your name on the list, so that's why I'm asking you to state your name and address.
Actually, it was just confirmed you didn't have my name. I must have stepped off to use the restroom.
No worries.
My name is Nicole McGill.
Okay, okay, well, I did call your name. I'm sorry.
Yes, no, no, that was my mistake.
Okay.
Although natural occurrences. I'm residing currently using an address in Norfolk, Virginia, 3701 Princess Anne Road. I'm also chairperson of a nonprofit called The Win Center. I'm speaking as chairperson of The Win Center for only two minutes, and the rest of the meeting, three minutes, as myself, my person. As chairperson of The Win Center, The Win Center was formerly known as the Wellness Intervention of Norfolk. When I was invited to join the organization as a volunteer at first, and then work my way up, I had suggested the name change, because, of course, as a person that does business, I didn't want other cities, the surrounding cities, to feel like it was Norfolk giving an intervention. It was just, that's where it was founded at. It's actually citizens that live with SMI, severe mental illness, that has experienced living in recovery for two or more years, or at least knows how to live well for two or more years. The reason why the number two is the average amount is a lack of community support, professional adequate training, and a lot of myths and stigmas, which we all know exists. We became a resource center. We used to be more so of a clubhouse. We became a resource center, more so doing wellness products, creating innovative events and services, and also being able to give our feedback. We are in the recovery process now. We were invited to seek one of the commercial buildings, leasing offices, to have one of our main offices located here, so that we could do more community service work in the area to support people in their mental health period, since we have the most experience in going through the different stages. Now, myself, I was actually house-searching for a single-family house for myself, and in pursuit of getting custody of my daughter. And the process of transferring my services, as well as my benefits, because I'm a person who lived with traumatic brain injury, I was injured, as well as three other severe mental health diagnoses, including schizophrenia, and also general anxiety disorder. I am public with those things, because those have the most stigma, and as well as the most belief that we can't take care of ourselves, more so than just tools and the extra support, and that we can't never take care of our children or have businesses. And I'm here standing to prove that that's not true. I also have experience working in federal government with immigration, natural services. I have worked for my benefits, okay? I don't get welfare. So the fact that when I had my head injury and my world changed, and I had to relearn everything, mind you, how to turn knobs, also how to speak as well as I'm speaking today. So I say all this, because when I was transferring my benefits over to be able to be an active, productive resident here in Portsmouth, because I do have a productive resident here in Portsmouth, because I do have a little, I like to work a lot. So, right now, the way that with Social Security and everyone else, that is conform to me doing more wellness work so that I'm able to keep up myself and my skills. Because you need skills to live well, okay? My information was fraudulently being reported. I'm being asked to pay for these fraudulent reports through Community Service Board, and I don't think that's fair. So, I would like to, because I need my records in order to continue working with the city management and also the Portsmouth Behavior CSB to resolve the conflicts that we had. And I would like to do that before taking any legal actions, because I am a true humanitarian, and it's about constructional criticism, not putting down people. So, I do have a lot of suggestions to bring to the table as well. And also, I would like to know who oversees the Portsmouth Housing Redevelopment, because that's also been something, information I have not been able to get a hold of. So, I need to know who oversees that authority. Am I able to get that answer here, or do I need to follow up later? I don't know how.
Okay, Ms. McGill. So, first of all, thank you for coming and providing those comments. We do have representatives here from our staff that can help you get the information that you desire, so if you would hang back just a few minutes, I think we have someone who could provide that to you.
Okay. And I would like to let it be known really quick, because I know my time is up.
Yes, ma'am.
That this is not going to be the first time you all hear of me or see of me. I will be back, I'll be back in further council meetings, and thank you so very much humbly for hearing me out.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, and good evening. That concludes our speakers for the evening, and seeing no other business to conduct, this meeting is adjourned.